It's 4:30. Are we ready to rock and roll?
Yes, we sure are.
Okay, well then, we are live captioning our meeting, everyone. And so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I called to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of February 15, 2022. Want to say that board membership at this meeting is not mandatory certainly, but as usual, I do take role. I will say that Ms. Bitter Smith is not able to meet with us this evening, so I'll move on to Mrs. McGrath. Are you present?
Only took me half an hour to move my mouse. Yes, I'm present.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
With my presence, we have five board members in attendance. One notified me of an absence, and I believe Ms. Smith will be joining us shortly. So Elsa, just let me know when she comes back on for the record. And then Mr. Evans, are you present with us this evening? And Elsa's same with for Mr. Evans.
Okay.
I understand that everyone had a wonderful Valentine's weekend and enjoyed your significant others or friends and other family members. But with that, we're going to move into February 15 with a different song than relating to Valentine's Day. And I believe, Dr. Lashinsky, you have a song title to share with us today.
I do, Board President Sullivan, and although music is not always my strength, don't have the voice of Mrs. McGrath or of Dr. Radisich. But so you won't hear me sing this one, but I thought for this evening, "High Hopes" by Frank Sinatra would be a wonderful tune for us to keep in mind as we review the metrics and the outcomes from our report.
Thank you. And also, congratulations on your appointment to the Scottsdale Community College Presidency. So with that, Dr. Gonzalez, we're here to discuss on this evening the 2021 Governing Board Performance Metrics Report. So would you like to introduce the topic and our presenters, please?
Yes, I would. President Sullivan, members of the Governing Board, CEC, faculty, staff, and guests that are with us this evening. I'm very impressed by Dr. Lashinsky's selection. Some have called him a Renaissance man, and I don't know if that proves it the case, but he certainly has a listening group that is interesting. So with that, I would like to thank everybody for this opportunity to do our annual presentation of the Governing Board Performance Metric Report that will be delivered here quickly. I'll turn it over in just a moment to Dr. Lashinsky, and he'll introduce the rest of the team. We'll have some members from his team, and we'll also, I believe, we've got a college president or two who will also bring some light to these data for you. As we discussed in the board retreat that we had several weeks ago, as we go through a new process to review our mission, vision, and values, and develop a strategic plan, we're hoping that out of that, too, comes a perhaps more laser-like focus on the types of goals that we focus on. And not only the type, but the number of goals that we focus on, and thereby changing the types of metrics that we begin to focus on. And so this may be, at least for some time, the last time that we see a board monitor report that has these outcomes that we're focusing on. You as a board will go through a process where, you know, you approve our strategic plan and perhaps a new mission, vision, and values for our system, and with that, a set of metrics that we will concentrate on moving forward. So we're looking forward to this presentation, and again, to the opportunity that lies before us to think about how we come back to you in the future and what we report on. So again, thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to your feedback here and to your questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lashinsky.
Thank you. And before Dr. Lashinsky, you move on, I wanted to ask, is it beneficial for people to ask you questions per each section? Or would you rather we wait until the end of your presentation?
Board President Sullivan, I think it would be best to wait until the end of the presentation. We'll go through the high-level slides that we've prepared and then have times for question and answer at the end.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward with that. Thank you.
Okay, and I believe Elsa is pulling up our presentation for this evening. And again, my name is Eric Lashinsky. I'm currently serving as our interim Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost, and it's my pleasure to be helping to kick off the presentation of this report. And with that, I want to set a little bit of our parameters and our timeline for when this report is really focusing on. So again, this report is for our data from fall 2020, as well as spring and summer of 2021. And as we all know, that is really the height of the pandemic, when it was impacting our system, impacting our enrollment, and as we'll see in some instances, impacting some of the outcomes with the metrics that you'll see in front of you this evening. About a month ago, we emailed to the collective board and members of the Maricopa Community Colleges community the entire monitoring report, about 28 pages or so, that looks at the respective metrics. Tonight, however, will be a high-level look at the different aspects and areas of the outcomes and metrics. But as mentioned earlier, will provide time for us to dive a little deeper in any questions that the board members may have. And so with that, Elsa, if you're able to go to the next slide, that'd be great. So as a reminder, again, as context, the board outcomes were first established in 2011 and first adopted at that time. But also, over the years, there's been some reiterations or modifications to those by a composition of a board different than this one, obviously, given that was back in 2011. But the board outcomes focus on these areas that you see in front of you, and there's more specific wording of those outcomes, and with that are the metrics as well. The metrics that were selected and that we shared with you tonight, we believe, align to the board outcomes and have been reported to the Governing Board for the last few years. They're chosen to help us show our progress in some areas and sometimes maybe where we need to make greater progress. And again, tonight, though, we'll be highlighting different elements of the monitoring report from a system level, as well as bringing in some of the voices from our campuses to highlight some of our great work at the local level as well. Elsa, next slide, please. So in the report, and also throughout our presentation tonight, you're going to see different symbols helping to showcase some different aspects. So first, if you look at that first row of arrows, there's an up arrow, a down arrow, and a sideways arrow indicating improving, declining, or stable. That's relating to our own comparison to ourselves year from the last year to then this year. So from two years ago, then, to also 2020, 2021. So you'll see that indicator there. But we also thought it very important to include how we are performing in relation to our peers. And so you'll see a circle around it with some arrows. A green arrow up means we're outperforming. A red arrow sort of pointing down means we're underperforming. But in some cases, where peer data is not available, you'll just see a white circle, if will, or an empty circle because there's no peer data. Our peers, again, just for context, are in comparison to Alamo Community Colleges, Austin Community College District, Northern Virginia Community College, the City Colleges of Chicago, and also the Lone Star College System. So again, you'll see throughout the report that you have and in the high-level presentation tonight, comparisons to ourselves year over year, and then also comparison to our peers. Elsa, one more slide, please. So as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, there will be other presenters sharing the different outcomes this evening along with some college highlights. So we'll have Dr. Meredith Warner presenting from, excuse me, our District Director of Integrated Student Support, Bettina Sallis, our Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic and Student Affairs, and also Dr. Keisha Brock, our Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic and Student Affairs, presenting from more of a systemic level. But then we'll also have some college highlights provided by Kate Smith, our President of Rio Salado College, Dr. Sheri Olson and Gerard Begay for South Mountain Community College, and also Dr. Greg Peterson for Chandler Gilbert Community College. So that's who you'll be hearing from tonight. And upon closing out their presentation, I'll be coming back on to close this out and then to open up the Q and A to be facilitated then by our Board President Sullivan. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Keisha Brock, who will start with our presentation. Dr. Brock.
Thank you, Dr. Lashinsky. Good afternoon. My name is Keisha Brock, and I serve as the Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs. I'm going to begin the work session by highlighting enrollment, awards, and transfer metrics for the 2020-21 academic year. It is important to note that these metrics count the number of students in certain stages of the student lifecycle. As such, a decline in one metric is partially linked to declines in subsequent metrics. The first metric, headcount, measures total enrollment as opposed to new enrollment. Our unduplicated credit headcount has declined by 17% in the past five years. Similar to community colleges nationally, Maricopa experienced a significant decline in headcount of 15.3% in 2021 academic year as compared to the previous year. This is a slightly greater decline than other two-year public institutions have experienced. They're at about 14.1%. Similar to headcount, credit hours earned, which is that next column, that 1.4 million, declined by 15% compared to prior academic year. The decrease in the credit hours earned metric is due both to a decline in headcount and in the number of credit hours attempted by each student. Moving on to the number of degrees and certificates awarded, at 13,820, Maricopa declined by 17% compared to the most recent year. Although Maricopa experienced a significant decline overall in awards, we did experience an increase in select programs. For example, both nursing and education saw increased awards of 17% within that same time period. And then the final metric of transfer, which is Maricopa students transferring to a four-year public institution with 12 or more credits, declined by 5% as compared to the previous academic year. In summary, these metrics point to several opportunities for improvement, and fortunately, we are seeing signs of hope. In terms of new student enrollment, in fall '21, we saw an increase in the conversion rate of new-to-Maricopa students from our enrollment pipeline of 3% over the prior year. Additionally, dual enrollment continues to grow and increased by 18% in fall of '21 as compared to fall of '20. And it's even up over pre-pandemic numbers, serving 850 more students than in fall of 2019. Additionally, several of our colleges experienced very slight enrollment growths, fall of '21 over fall of '20. For example, Chandler Gilbert increased by 103 students in that timeframe. I think it's important to note that we're committed to crafting a strategic enrollment management effort that focuses on total enrollment rather than new enrollment growth. As you will see from the remainder of this presentation, the most dramatic impact on total enrollment can be accomplished through our commitment to improving retention, to help students that come to us stay and complete with us. This commitment to retention will drive enrollment, drive awards, and drive transfer output. So Elsa, as you move to the next slide, I'm going to go ahead and ask President Peterson from Chandler Gilbert Community College to provide a college spotlight.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. Good evening, President Sullivan, member of the board. This is Greg Peterson. I'm very honored to be able to share some insight in the work we're doing at Chandler Gilbert. And speaking to Dr. Brock's signs of hope, Chandler Gilbert has been able to continue to grow our dual enrollment student population over this past year, even into this semester, where we are 16 and a half percent up in our dual enrollment, about 3,500 students this semester. We attribute that to a couple key efforts. The first one has been in working with our partners in the high schools, really focusing on completion. So this emphasis on showing how students shouldn't be just taking courses, but seeing how those courses fit into an Arizona general education curriculum or AJEC transfer packet, or how they fit into a field of interest as they look at entering into a program and by transfer after graduation into the community college. The other key piece, and I want to take a moment and just give a huge shout out to our dual enrollment team for the amazing work they're doing. The other piece has been the investment we've made in our high school embedded advisors. We have six embedded advisors in 11 of our 18 feeder high schools, and that's had a significant impact on those relationships, on the visibility, and on the ease of students being able to access our dual enrollment program. I want to thank the Governing Board for their support in helping us in that effort with our high school embedded advisors. And I'm excited to see how we can continue to grow that program across the district and expand those relationships moving forward as one of our key strategies in supporting that entering new student. Thank you.
Next slide, please, Elsa. Thank you, Dr. Peterson. And I'm Bettina Sallis, Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, and I have the privilege of sharing our completion outcomes. And so unlike Dr. Brock's slide, this is where we really are going to start off with some positive gains and early successes. I think this is where we're seeing the early results of our really positive guided pathways work. So our first metric, our two-year graduation and transfer rate, is up. We've increased by 4%. In addition to that, our three-year completion and transfer rate has increased by 2%. So our early gains as a result of our guided pathways implementation and the work that our colleges are doing around getting students on a path, keeping them on a path, and some of the things that Dr. Peterson just mentioned are really positive, early signs that the work is making a difference. And while our four-year graduation rate is stable and our four-year transfer rate has declined, we know that we have an opportunity to really improve in these spaces. And as part of our four-year completion and transfer as our primary goal for the next three years, we believe that the short-term gains that we've seen in two-year and three-year, we will start to see show up in our four-year graduation and transfer rate very shortly. And then lastly, our equity gaps in wage outcomes, those have also improved. So our three-year post-completion livable wages are now $2,000 higher than they were last year. And the $36,000 wage is a livable wage as for our completers here in the state of Arizona. We know that we still have opportunities from an equity gap perspective to close around completion and kind of match up with our peers. But I think we're seeing some really positive forward momentum in these spaces that we can directly attribute to a lot of the great work that's happening systemically. And to share a little bit about some of that completion work, I'll turn it over to Dr. Olson and Gerard Begay, who's going to share a little bit about South Mountain.
Good evening, everyone. This is Sheri Olson from South Mountain, and I'm just proud to share with you the outstanding work of our coordinator of the American Indian Center at South Mountain, Mr. Gerard Begay. I want his voice to get the credit for the work he's doing with our American Indian students. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Begay.
So hello, everyone. My name is Gerard Begay. I am Navajo. I'm born for the Big Water people. For the last three years, I've been working at South Mountain Community College as the coordinator for the American Indian Student Center. Overall, I've been with Maricopa since 2011. I work in the American Indian Student Center where we provide support for Native American students. We provide support by supporting them with mentoring and academic guidance, and then also enhancing the overall college experience, building partnership with tribal communities, agencies, and local government and local organizations. Through the pandemic, I noticed that a lot of our students were struggling. So prior to the pandemic, I had invited four female Native American females to be our guest speakers. And then pandemic happened. And so what I did was I went and switched over to having it as a virtual online speaker series, and I called it "Paving the Way." So the first speaker was Pankowee from out of Kansas. She's the Kansas State Representative. Next, I had Sharice Davis. She's a U.S. Representative. And the third one was Gabriella Carosa Kelly. She's Pima County's first Native American county recorder. And the third person was Amanda Charamaya. She's a PhD candidate. And during this time, during their presentation, they talked about their experiences as a Native American and being the first, whether it's in elected office or gaining a doctoral degree. So basically, they shared their personal experience with the students at South Mountain Community. And the goal of the speaker series was to give our students some hope, uplift their voice, and encourage them to self-advocate for themselves. So that was the first part of our speaker series. In addition to that, I also want to talk a little bit about visibility as it pertains to South Mountain Community College. You know, during the pandemic, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of us had to stay home. But for me, I was out and about helping, you know, as much as I can and being visible out in tribal communities. For example, Pasca Yaki had several testing sites that they partnered up with Native Health. They also had vaccine shots and so forth. And so I was out there representing not just my office, but South Mountain Community College and giving back to the community. In addition to that, also, I participated in several tribal ceremonial events, which is Pasca Yaki's Easter celebration. And, you know, being present and being there, having our students see who, you know, see me in their community, I think meant a lot to them. They'd see me. They would see me. They'd come up and tell me, you know, thanks for coming by. So being visible within our community during the pandemic was actually a big push on my part. In addition to that, I also did, you know, a lot of communication that was having, that was being shared with our students was via email. And so I had to think outside the box and think about, how am I going to engage my students? How am I going to get their attention? So I started creating videos for our students and videos that pertain to college resources, resources that pertains to the pandemic. And also, just, you know, last year in the fall of 2021, when they were coming back to school, I included their tribal leaders to make a little short welcome-back video for their students. And a lot of our students really connected with that. So these video messages, at the end of the day, what it did was it humanized the experience. So a lot of students, you know, they're not out and about, so having someone and having the videos humanized the whole experience. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the American Indian Student Center, you know, at South Mountain Community College. It's a center that we consider a home away from home. It allows our students, our Native American students, the ability to be themselves. In addition, it also provides a sense of belonging, promoting networking for our American Indian students. It's a dedicated place where they can be themselves culturally, a place where they cannot, where they are not overshadowed by other minority groups. You know, during this pandemic, like I mentioned, I was helping a lot of Native Americans. And when we opened back up, basically, I had students coming in. And one thing that really, I think, spoke loud to me was I had a student coming in, and I was helping her with her scholarship, and she was Navajo. And I talked to her, you know, and I asked her in Navajo, did I catch you, meaning, do you speak Navajo? And she responded, oh, which means yes. So for the next 30 minutes, we talked in Navajo, and you could just see that excitement in her eyes and that, you know, that connection that I built with her through our language. And at the very end, she basically walked away and said, you know, thank you. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak my native language, which I don't always do. So this is what our center is doing. But I want to end with saying that this whole experience has taught me to be authentic, to be humble and sincere, to be patient with my students. Sometimes I have to be a teacher and mentor, and sometimes I have to be a student as well. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Gerard. Hi there. I'm Meredith Warner. I am our District Director of Integrated Student Support, a large part of our Guided Pathways Framework in the district. Actually, Elsa, we go back to that slide for just one second. So when we talk about the leading indicators of student success in Maricopa, I think it's really important to look at this slide and see that at South Mountain Community College, their Native American student completion and transfer is up 10%. And that takes a lot of work on a lot of people's parts. And Gerard, I can't say enough good things about all the efforts that you're all doing at South Mountain, because these kinds of numbers are truly the indicators of what we're going to see in years to come. So thank you. Okay, Elsa, you can go to the next slide. I just wanted to make sure that we all saw how great that improvement was at South. So I'm going to talk to you today about the leading indicators of student success. And really, this is in a large part the guided pathways work that we do across Maricopa. When Bettina talked, she shared those two- and three-year outcomes, and she was specific to point out that those are also leading indicators of those four- and five-year outcomes. So we are up in completion and transfer for our students in the shorter term, which is a great indicator of the work we're doing across all 10 colleges to assure students that they are on a pathway. One way to get to that pathway, if you look at the first number on this slide, is to ensure that students have a way to complete college-level English and math in their first year. And that number isn't just up. That number is way up. We've changed our placement measures. We've changed how we interact with students from the moment they interact with us. Five years ago, that number was 25 percentage points lower. And I give so much credit to a lot of Bettina's team. I know that Dr. Roz Knight and Dr. Ashley Steek led the charge and are still leading the charge in our developmental education redesign. But to move that needle over five years, 25% more of our students are taking college-level English and math is remarkable. But what's even more remarkable is if you look at the last number on this slide, you see college-level course completion. That is math and English college-level course completion. So while 85% of our students are not necessarily completing what they start, we know that's a challenge for our students, especially in the realm of math. It is remarkable to see that as a district, 6% in just the last year, in the year of the pandemic, when we knew math was going to be difficult online, our faculty, our staff really supported our students. 6% more students are completing college-level math than they were in just the year prior, when we weren't navigating a pandemic. So those are pretty remarkable numbers. And when you look at the rest of this, you see credit momentum. What is credit momentum? It's actually the number of credit hours a part-time student is taking up to 12 in a year, or a full-time student is taking up to 24 in a year, and we are down in that number. But we are still outperforming our peers. We know that the pandemic has made it so that our full-time students are taking far fewer credit hours. Many of our part-time students found that college was too cumbersome, or they're taking even fewer credits. That one-year retention number, that's the fall-to-fall retention, who started in one fall and was still here the next fall. So that's the 2020-2021 academic year, and we are down. We have been as high as 57%, and we will get back there. The pandemic has not been kind to us. But our peers are even doing worse. And so we are trying as hard as we possibly can as a district to hang on to the students that we have and bring our students through the next year. We have an entire first-year experience task force working tirelessly at the colleges to make sure that we can help students not through, not making sure that they don't drop out in their first semester or their second semester, because we know that's where we lose them, and we are outperforming our peers by almost 2 percentage points. And then there's the credit success rate. So this is how many of our students are finishing what they start. They take six credit hours. They finish six credit hours. They take 12 credit hours. They finish 12 credit hours. 75% of our students are completing what they start. While we are down over years prior, we are still outperforming our peers. These are our leading indicators, and we know that we have learned so much over the course of the last year and a half, two years in the pandemic, and we are able to better support our students. I know, like Keisha told you in that first slide, that we have hope, and we see great indicators that these numbers are going to change for our public, for our community, for our students. So I'm really excited to pass the torch over to President Smith at Rio Salado, so she can talk a little bit about the great success rates at Rio Salado, because Rio Salado isn't 75%. Rio Salado is up to 83%. So it's pretty remarkable work. Kate?
Thank you so much, Dr. Warner. Much appreciated. President Sullivan, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share further. As noted on the slide, and as Dr. Warner noted, we saw an overall 2% increase in our course success rates. And that, I'm pleased to share, is across all key demographic comparisons, race, ethnicity, gender, age grouping, first-generation status. We've seen the increases equally across full-time and part-time learners. And as you know, we have a large percentage of part-time students, so equally important in terms of looking at this through an equity lens. Also noted on the slide is that we want to highlight what we attribute this success to, and it's to several factors. But first and foremost, I'd like to share a little bit about the case management model that Rio has implemented. Thank you to the Governing Board. Thank you to the governing board for their support of the guided pathways model. Within that model, we've, the teams used our four disciplines of execution framework to set goals, track progress, and ultimately implement all facets of the case management model, which include students automatically being assigned to a field of interest advisor. And again, as you're familiar with Rio and the close to 48 start dates a year, new students might be starting at any point. So that automatic assignment actually is very key and very important in a successful model. The teams also developed as part of their first-year experience for students, again, part of the guided pathways model, that students get automated messages five times within their first semester. So as we kind of study what touchpoints are most influential for students, that as we keep growing that knowledge base, that's how those outreaches are timed, so that they're getting that support from their assigned advisor. And then this also includes students completing a semester-by-semester plan towards their completion. And we created a new student portal, the Rio Learn Portal, where students can easily find their advisor and easily schedule a phone call, contact them through email, schedule a Zoom meeting with them, so that students have that, they know exactly how to contact their advisor, and we've made that streamlined for the students. I also want to just share a little bit about the Rio PACE, which is an in-house early alert system that we've developed to provide early alerts for both the faculty and for the students. And this tool is based on predictors such as login information, engagement with course content, things such as opening lesson content, completing assignments, viewing instructor feedback, points earned, et cetera. These success indicators on the course roster allow the faculty to readily identify any students who are at risk, and then launch proactive interventions to help them succeed. Similarly, the student view can act as a nudge for students to change or maintain any academic behaviors that will like, that will increase their likelihood of success. Currently, PACE analytics are offered in nearly 200 of our courses with a predictive success rate of approximately 93%. Likewise, we have a dynamic assessment data display that calls over a million points of data that allow our faculty chairs to be monitoring student performance across all sections of any course and do real-time interventions if there's, they're seeing collectively that there, there are any points of difficulty for students. So finally, I just want to also give a shout out to our faculty. So our advising teams, our IR teams, our tech teams, and our faculty teams all work very closely in implementing the guided pathways work. And the faculty have also taken hold of the four disciplines of execution framework to focus on retention in the guided pathways framework, really expanding the use of PACE to increase course completion for students. And of course, our faculty chairs support all of our adjunct faculty, who are integral, obviously, to the student's success. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, President Smith, for highlighting some of the great outcomes occurring at Rio Salado. And so with that, I'm going to sort of wrap us up and transition us into our question and answer from our board members. But to do so, just have three points or elements I want to highlight. First, I'd definitely be remiss if I didn't offer some gratitude, specifically to Lori Lindenberg and the Enterprise Analytics Team, along with the ASA Leadership Team for their countless hours in compiling the board monitoring report. So they spend a lot of time, obviously, culling through the data, putting it together in what we, what we hope is a very digestible and readable format. So I want to express my gratitude to them, all of them collectively, who helped to contribute to the overall board monitor report that was shared with all of you a month or so ago. Second, you know, obviously, as we listen to our presentation tonight, there are some stark realities that are in front of us. And we have key opportunities listed here on this slide. But we're very aware that as a system, there is great urgency regarding our enrollments, specifically related to our retention of our existing students. As we know, as Dr. Brock highlighted for us, that's a key area that we know is an opportunity for us to help improve upon our completion and transfer metrics. We know that there, there are elements within the report where we see our equity gap not improving, but sometimes widening. So there are some stark realities that face us, and we, as a system, recognize that urgency. And we've heard your call as board members, as we know, we've had those conversations about what can we do to improve upon the enrollment process? What can we do to improve upon our outreach to our students? And what can we do to just improve the student experience overall? We are doing our best to respond to that to the best of our ability, and hopefully we'll see some positive gains in the moments to come. But I also want to focus on the signs of hope, to use that theme that's sort of reverberated throughout this, this session. There are some signs of hope that are there for us as a system. We heard about the increase in dual enrollment across our system right now. The early outreach to our students is making a difference. The embedded advisors are having a positive impact on our overall metrics as a system. We are seeing early gains in the transfer and completion of our students in years one and two. We did see an improvement on wage outcomes, although I know we strive to have those wage outcomes increase and get even better for our students. We are seeing an increase in the conversion rates of our students who come to us. And so we, and we have finally seen improvements in the first-year completion of college-level English and math. So we recognize, again, as sort of a final bow here, we recognize that there are some stark realities in front of us. And as a system, we have to do more and respond to, to really coming out of this pandemic stronger and better that we've talked about, and doing our best to impact enrollment to the best of our abilities, focusing on new students, of course, but even more important, the students we have, and wrapping our arms around them to provide the success that they need to meet their goals. We have some points of pride, if you will, or we have some signs of hope, and that's something I think we can continue to build upon. So again, thank you to all involved in putting our performance report together. And now with that, Board President Sullivan, I'd like to turn it back over to you and see how you'd like to move forward with getting questions from the board. And we'll have many of the team members who responded today, and possibly some others that are available to log on as needed or jump in as needed to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. The team did a great job and appreciate the information, certainly. I expect there are some questions from board members, and as I usually do, I'm going to go through the list and give everyone an opportunity individually, and then we can open it up if there are any lingering questions to be asked by board members or discussion to have. So with that, I'd like to start with you, Mrs. McGrath. Do you have any questions or comments on this report this evening? I can come back to you while you're probably trying to get on. Dr. Narini?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I, not so many questions, it's just kind of comments. I mean, first of all, I'm encouraged, not so much by the numbers, but by the, by the work that's being done. Because anybody who's ever worked with, with students and worked with student retention and outreach and that sort of thing knows what a, what a fickle crew they are and, and how difficult it is. And I'm encouraged that, just from the research I've done on retention and, and recruitment, we're, we're doing some of the right things. We're, we're being proactive instead of reactive. We're, we're trying to fix the institutional gaps instead of, you know, putting up disadvantages to the students. You know, what we've done, I think the pandemic has really shown, you know, is, is some of the research that Pasquale and Terenzini has done on redesigning the classroom, redesigning the, the work that, the way that the, the students are being taught. So I'm encouraged by that. I guess what I just want to put out there is how much collaboratively as, as a district, as well as institutions themselves, you know, can we go in and look at some of the research, especially given what's going on now with the pandemic and the new change in the population, so that we can see the research and see what's, what's structured? Because we know that, we know what makes students successful, we know what makes students retain, you know, and that's engagement, and that's inclusion and integration and that sort of thing. And, and with the pandemic, it's, it's so much more difficult to do that. So I think just to put out there, you know, to be, come up with creative ways and to be more proactive with, with some of these things, and think about ways that we can engage students and, and integrate the students into the, into the campuses so that we can retain them. But I'm encouraged with what we're doing with the embedded counselors, you know, the embedded counselors and some of the, the work that those entry-level positions are doing is, is integral with what we're doing. And, you know, there's some of the lower-paid staff that we have, but they're doing some of the more impactful work. Just as with the dual enrollment crew, just the investment that we put in, I know at PC, they've, they've invested in, in, in more staff with the dual enrollment in early college as, as South Mountain and Gateway. And that's showing returns, that's showing returns in, in what we've done with dual enrollment and the enrollment there. So just putting out there to, to kind of think more, think more through more closely some of the research that's out there and how we can integrate that and be more proactive with, with this work. And again, the, the numbers aren't as encouraging as the effort that's being put in by, by all the staff. So I, I want to take my hat off to them for, for all the work that they're doing and encourage them to keep doing it.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Ms. Smith, do you have any comments or questions for this evening?
Hi, thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I just wanted to start with a really minor comment, which was apologies if this was in the larger, if there's a larger document. But there are a couple of terms that I'm still getting used to, like course success, I think, was one, which I interpreted then to mean course completion. And so I was just wondering if there could be like a cheat sheet of terms or, or an appendix to the report, just so I can continue to learn some of the terminology. I was following along while you were speaking about it, but if I turned to the report later on, I might not know some of the terms. More substantively, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the emphasis on how we will be continuing to retain students and the important work that will go there. And as Dr. Narini said, it's really a complex endeavor. And last but not least, wanted to share that for the two-year graduation or, or transfer rate, I would be curious in the future to have a better sense of if the, and maybe if someone can just clarify now on the phone, I'm just not sure, again, in terms of terminology for some of these rates. So for two-year graduation or transfer, are most of the students within that 16% actually graduating, or are most of those students transferring? Do we have the breakdown between those, between those two was my only other note that I wrote down of a question? Thank you.
Board Member Smith, thank you. So first on the cheat sheet, yes, we can definitely provide that for you and the other board members. We do have an electronic dictionary, if you will, but we can go ahead and cull that out into something that can be digestible for you and others. So no problem there. Definitely appreciate you highlighting the emphasis on retention. Thank you. And then on your question regarding the transfer component, I'd actually like to turn it over to our, one of our lead data folks here, Lori Lindenberg. Hopefully, Lori, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I guess I am in this moment. Are you able to handle that last question that Board Member Smith provided?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Smith, President Sullivan, Board Members, Chancellor Gonzalez and CEC. As we're looking at the two-year completion and transfer rate, what we see is 11% of students getting to transfer and 5% getting to completion. So it is more transfer than completion activity.
Okay. Over time, as we're, you know, as the efforts are persisting on the retention, I know these things all go hand in hand. I would be curious to hear about what we think it's going to take to improve those completion numbers and whether or not we feel like there will be any relationship between two-year completion and then students continuing on to a four-year degree. Like, I wonder if some of those students who are not completing on the two-year path are the kinds of students that we'd be trying to encourage to also go to a four-year pathway? Or if the students who are not completing some of these two-year options are focused more on, on CTE? In other words, I was just thinking a little bit about what are the implications of this two-year graduation and transfer rate on our upcoming ambitions related to bachelor, related to the bachelor's degree? And what steps are being taken? Or if perhaps these are really seen as different student populations?
Board Member Smith, I think those are, one, fantastic questions. And two, I think we'll definitely have to think about how we capture that data that you're asking for right now. Well, obviously, we're in the early stages of Maricopa's launching of our four-year degrees. I tend to be curious and speculative like you are, that I do think we're going to capture that population that maybe had an interest in a four-year degree. However, due to cost, due to access, may have not been able to act to, to achieve that or transfer into a state university. So possibly that would mean greater completion from our perspective, both in the two-year and hopefully in our four-year arena. One piece I'll offer though, too, we're seeing more and more of our students right now in the part-time, as part-time students. And so as we talk about a two-year completion, two-year degree or two-year transferring, more than 70% of our students are part-time. And so the concept of them being able to complete in two years right now is difficult, given the limited number of credits they're taking in the part-time format. So as a system, I think we have to think about what we can do to design our pathways, to design our course offerings and our support services to better support the part-time student, because I think that will only continue to be our leading population of students as well. So we can't lose sight of that in our data collection and then also in how we design our, our courses and structures there. But with part-time students, two years is a tough metric for us overall, because the majority of our students are, again, in a part-time capacity.
Thank you. That's a really helpful insight. And I think I'll close by saying, there were a couple of comments that I thought were so helpful, given during the presentation, that I was actually wishing they were written into the document itself. I think pointing out the part-time nature, excuse me if it is written in this report, but just something for us to consider. I know we're trying to keep the report kind of short and sweet, but some of those great insights could be helpful to be included in the future. Thanks, everyone, for your hard work on this.
Great feedback, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I actually have more comments than I, than I have questions, just like Dr. Narini. First, I, I want to thank the presenters and the preparers of this report. It's very interesting and very informative. But I also want to thank all of the people across the system who have worked on all of these initiatives that are now producing these results. When I think back to the presentation of the monitoring report, right after I was first elected to the board in 2016, and then look at these outcomes, we have come a long, long way. And frankly, I expected the pandemic to have had a much more negative impact on these outcomes than it appears that it, that it has. So that's very gratifying. But specifically, you know, the intentional work around guided pathways, around college readiness, the embedded advisors, and to see the direct impact that's now having on dual enrollment is just very gratifying. Just a comment about the discussion that just took place regarding two-year graduation or transfer rate and four-year graduation and transfer rate. I'm curious as to why we're not using the federal rate, which is three years for two-year completion and six-year for four-year completion.
Sorry about that, I couldn't find my, my mouse on that one, so.
I didn't think it.
You totally did, Board Member Thor, you totally did. So I just couldn't find my mouse. So in this moment, we do track our three years. That's something we do continue to track. I'm going to ask Lori to explain a little more clearly regarding our two and four-year and the types of peer data where you I'm going to ask Lori to explain a little more clearly regarding our two and four-year and the types of peer data we're using for this. So Lori, again, apologize for putting you on the spot, but I think this is right in your wheelhouse.
Not a worry. Thank you. Thank you for the question, President Sullivan, Board Members, Chancellor Gonzalez and CEC. We do track our completion outcomes, which includes both graduation and transfer rates at two, three, four, six and eight years. Now, we did call particular attention to two years and four years in the board report, and that's been our standard for the past two years. But we have dashboards that actually produce all of the metrics that you see in the report. And those dashboards provide us the two, three, four, six and eight milestone timelines.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry? More comments? No, okay. Ms. Win.
So I want to also compliment the professionalism of this presentation. It's really well done. And all the news wasn't good, but it was delivered with great enthusiasm, which goes to attitude about what we're dealing with, and I think that that is important. I definitely want to underline the accomplishments of South Mountain as it relates to the minority students and the focus on that and the completion. And if we can go back to that slide, if it's possible, if you don't mind. There we go. So that the completion for all students was up 2%, Native American 10%, Black students 3% and Hispanic students 4%. I think that's, whatever they're doing there needs to be duplicated at the other nine colleges. That is a lesson learned, that is, whatever's being done there needs to be recreated. That is, that speaks so loudly in all the things that were going on with the pandemic. This is, this is just, I know someone else pointed this out, but this is a measure of success that we should all take pride in. And we didn't do it, I didn't do anything to cause this, except to, I just really want to underline this. The thing that does concern me is in this presentation, and congratulations, South Mountain, great job. The thing that does concern me is we are comparing ourselves with peers. Could someone tell me who, and I'm going to put this in air quotes, our peers are? Like when we're saying we're doing better than our peers, who are we doing better than? I don't, that was too vague for me to know who we were talking about.
Sure, Board Member Win, I can definitely try to provide a little context there. So the five institutions that we utilize as our peers are Alamo Community Colleges, the Austin Community College District, Northern Virginia Community College, City Colleges of Chicago, and then the Lone Star College System. And so we're comparing ourselves to larger districts per se that, you know, have some similar demographics, similar populations, similar in size. So those are the five primary peers that we're comparing to.
Okay. The other thing I would like to suggest then, or request, is that as we do this and we're looking at the spotlight year over year, I don't know what the percentages are in relationship to, are they, are they a comparison from the previous year?
So, yes, they are a comparison to the previous year. And I got to clarify the peer institutions. My, the team has been IMing me and saying I'm somewhat correct. So the five I provided you are subset of the 192 peer institutions. So I apologize for that. So it's a larger, it's a larger group of peer institutions. But those five are just giving you a subset of the five we're pulling on. But yes, it's compared to the previous year to answer your other question specifically.
Okay, so we clearly have been affected by the pandemic and I would like to see us continue to focus on improving our enrollment, obviously. Retention is still critical. The mentor, and you called it something else, but the program where we're putting people together with students to help them facilitate their success obviously is working. So however, we facilitate more of that. And I just, I'm encouraged by what I see. I wish that we had more students. It seems like what we're doing is working with the population of students that we have, but we now need to get more students so that we can show that we can do this with a bigger, bigger student body, if you will. And I would just, I would like to see us focus on, obviously, we got to see certain colleges. It would be nice to see how this was, you know, I don't know if there's a chart that shows all the colleges so that we can identify. We don't like to talk about our weaknesses, we like to talk about our strengths, but maybe see where we've got some gaps, because we're talking about gaps, where we can, we can address those gaps, not like making a different college wrong if they're not doing as well with their minority students, but bring the successes from one campus to another. I think that we could benefit from where we've had success to create a bigger success across the district. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Win. Mrs. McGrath, I'm going to go back to you. Are you able to log in for conversation?
Yes, I was able to keep control of my mouse for a change.
Okay. So your turn.
An excellent report, very interesting, but there was one figure that seemed to be missing. I'd like to know how much it costs us to retain each of these students. We've never had a report that included our costs. We don't know what this cost for each of the factors that go into this. The guided gateway, the guided performances and such. I'd like to see a report that shows how much of these, the costs are for each of these programs.
Thank you, Board Member McGrath, and that's definitely something we can look deeper into and provide with you and working with Kim Grignio as well to help us better understand how to report that to you. One point I just want to share, it's more of a, just a high level from a national research perspective, but just generally speaking, we know the cost to retain a student from a national perspective tends to be lower than the cost of recruiting a new student, if you will. And there's data that's available from a national perspective on that. But of course, we can dig a little more deeper into the Maricopa data and we can provide something, you know, and work with you all to make sure we get specifically what questions you have on the cost aspect of this. But absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you. I'd like it not just for me, but obviously for the entire board and for the taxpayers, because they're paying for every one of these, and I think it's important we get more bang for our buck.
Absolutely, for the whole board, we can, we can get that information for the whole board. Thank you.
Mrs. McGrath, do you have anything else? Sounds like perhaps no more questions from board members. Board members, do you have any other lingering question or thought for, or for comment before we move on? If you do, it's okay, just speak up.
I have one more.
Please, go ahead.
Talked about our peer institutions. I've always been told that we were the largest community college district in the nation. And I'd like to know the size of these various community colleges and districts that we're being compared to.
Sure thing, we can provide that as well. I don't think that'll be a problem.
So I guess it's my turn before we, as we wrap this up. And I'm impressed with the conversation and comments of my peers this evening. Doesn't leave a whole lot for me to comment on, other than I want to express my appreciation and thanks for your report this evening. I recall the last monitoring report, well, the first monitoring report I heard when I became a board member. And I have to say, I was kind of lost in the weeds. I have had an opportunity to not peruse thoroughly, but look at the previous 28 pages. And I think your summary presentation was really perfect for our presentation this evening. And certainly, board members, if they want more information, can refer to the 28-page report. I particularly appreciated the use of analytics to identify and stratify so much of this information. And as I was listening, and again, most of my colleagues, or my colleagues asked most of the questions I did, I think a couple of things struck me, and that was the shared learning that each college can give another in working through so many pieces of this. The real conversation around pace, I thought, was significant. The work that Dr. or Mr. McGay presented around South Mountain, the interests that are going on at Chandler Gilbert. I mean, they're all very significant in their own colleges and how do we translate those wins and those successes into the system? I think it was a comment by Ms. Win, but certainly I would support encouraging us to continue to look at those shared opportunities of learning so that we can improve throughout the entire district in all of those areas. As you're leaning through the analytics, one of the questions I would have is of the students that we are supporting through case management and more deliberate advisement, whether they're, as we're recruiting students to bring them in for enrollment or as we're supporting them so they continue with us until they complete whatever program or degree they're focused on, is the measure of wraparound services that they receive from us. I don't know if there's a way to capture that, if you already capture that, but I'd be interested if there's a correlate between those that do receive a lot of that, not just the career advising, but some of the other approaches that we take to supporting students for success and those that are then subsequently successful. That would just be something that was interesting to me, and I don't know if you're tracking that already, but that could also inform us as to how we need to pursue further our wraparound services support, not just advising, but the other elements that contribute to student successes. And maybe that is articulated out of the South Mountain wins, but it was just something that crossed my mind that hadn't come up yet. So with that, though, I want to, again, thank you, Dr. Lysinski and presenters this evening for your sharing of information, for all the hard work. I know that you were the presenters and are important figures in this work, but you all have staff and teams that contribute to making this report happen as well as supporting our students day in and day out. And that would also include our faculty and employee staff. So I want to show my appreciation and say thank you. And as we move forward with strategic planning, I think we will have opportunities to reshape of how we look at some of these outcomes and be able to do even more discernment about what are our best practices and how do we continue to strive for that achievement of excellence across the board? So thank you, Dr. Lysinski and everyone involved in this. And thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Do you have any closing comments before we move into agenda review?
I think you, President Sullivan, I want to echo your comments on expressing gratitude to our presenters here today, to our faculty and staff that wake up each and every day to give their 110% to our students. Appreciate the good feedback and the questions that you provided as a board. And to your question around wraparound services, without looking at data, I would venture to guess that if they, if it mimics our boutique programs, and those are the programs that are typically funded by grants, where we serve cohorts of students of anywhere from 50 to 200 students or more, but the idea is that there's a concentrated cohort that's focused on. And typically, those grants allow us to provide wraparound services. We see tremendous success rates from those programs. The difficulty is being able to scale that to the system level, and that's what we're constantly working on in our system, or finding ways to provide those wraparound services. I would further offer that through this pandemic, that our system as a whole, I think, did its, did its best job as an entire system of providing as close to wraparound services that we could provide to the entire system, to all students. And I think we did this under this umbrella of COVID and having this level of compassion for our students that, that I'm not so sure existed before. And I don't mean that in a disparaging way, but I think this pandemic shed some light on the humanistic values and humanistic approach of what we do. For once, across our system, we took great strides and efforts to ensure that testing was available, that vaccines were available for those who wanted them, that food was available for students when they had a difficult time finding food. And we even made that available to our employees and to the communities that we served. We provided funding that was available through the HERF dollars to our students to help them bridge the gap during this difficult time. So there's clear evidence that as a system, we have the ability to provide services that we, in a way that we haven't provided them before, and meeting the students where they are and less of a focus of, you know, concerned about the student as to what the condition is when they arrive, but meeting them where they are and providing the service to them in a way that makes them most successful. I think that really this is just the beginning for Maricopa. Really excited about our work around, you know, a new strategic plan and our focus on wildly important goals. And so much, so much work and opportunity lies ahead that I really believe that this is just the beginning and we're going to continue to see increases in our, in our rates that we've shared with you here today. So thank you for giving me that chance to wrap it up, and I apologize for the long-winded closure there, but I'm just really excited about this, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I think it's important. And certainly, that world of support is becoming a national focus. The pandemic brought it out, so thank you very much for that. So with that, I'm going to adjourn or close tonight's work session. And again, thank you all for that. I'm going to pause for one minute and we will then open agenda review. So it, my clock says 5:37, I'll give you two minutes. I'll wait till 5:39 and call us to order. Thank you. Hey, looks like we're ready to go, Elsa. So with that, I'm going to call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of February 15th, 2022. And today, we are going to review the agenda for the February 22nd, 2022 board meeting. A lot of twos in that. I want to remind everyone again, we are live captioning our meetings, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. For the record, I'm going to call vote, roll call vote of board members. Mr. Evans, are you present this evening? I don't believe Mr. Evans, our student trustee, is present. Ms. Bitter Smith is not attending. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini?
I'm present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? I know you're out there, so I'll come back and call, call your name one more time. Linda, Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Win?
Present.
Ms. Smith? Elsa, do you know if she's on somewhere?
Yes, I show that she's, she's still on, she's still connected. She may have just stepped away.
All right, I'm going to say for right now, there are five board members present, one absent, student trustee is not present, and Ms. Smith is, but hasn't accepted the roll call vote. So we'll note for the record when she does come on. So with that, then, moving into the governing board agenda for February 2022, 2022, February 22, 2022, we'll then recite that we'll go through the normal course of action at the board meetings with usual regular meeting presentations after the call to order. And then we will move into our consent agenda. And as usual, I will read the topics for the consent agenda, and I will ask if you have comments or questions on each item. So the first one is the approval of faculty emeritus distinction for Mrs. Renee Cornell. Any comments or questions? Next, approval of faculty emeritus distinction for Mr. Dwayne Oaks. Any comments or questions? Next, approval of faculty emeritus distinction for Mr. John Lipton. Any comments or questions?
Moving on then to the item number five on the consent agenda, approval of the Healthcare United at Gateway for next summer 2021 and fall 2021 quality management reports. Any comments or questions on the reports? Item six, approval to continue brokerage services from Aon Risk Solutions for one month effective March 1, 2022 through March 31st, 2022. Any comments or questions?
I just, this is Mrs. Nguyen, I have a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Brokerage services for. I, what is that? What is this? And how much?
Okay, Dr. Gonzalez.
President Sullivan, Board Member Nguyen, I'm going to bring Ms. Kim Grineo, our interim chief financial officer, to provide a response to your question.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Good evening, President Sullivan. Ms. Nguyen. The brokerage services are for our property and casualty insurance. And so they are the ones who help us seek out through RFP processes who our carriers are going to be.
And only, we're only extending for a month because?
Because we actually have an RFP in process right now to renew or get a new broker to provide those services to us. And so the one month is just to allow us to finish out the RFP process. And then we will actually bring whoever the successful bidder is into service starting for one. And that will also tie into the services that we receive for student accident and international student insurance as well. So it will kind of link everything up together time wise.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the, yeah, at least now I know what it is. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Item seven, approval of landscape maintenance contractor selection, Reyes and Sons Landscaping LLC for outsourced landscaping maintenance services at Scottsdale Community College. Any comments or questions on that item? Item eight, approval of utility easement to Salt River Project for underground electrical facilities improvements at Rio Salado College Northern Campus. Any comments or questions? Item nine, approval of abandonment and relocation of a section of an existing public water line at South Mountain Community College and the granting of the related new easement to the city of Phoenix. Any comments or questions? Item 10, approval to issue a job order contracting purchase order in the amount of $722,568.24 to SDB Construction for installation of touchless plumbing devices at Phoenix College. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I'd like to have this item removed.
So when? Okay, so we will then take that out of the order and place it on the action nonconsent agenda item at the next board meeting. Mrs. McGrath, you seeking other information on this?
I think that with the financial situation that we have, that we don't need to be spending three quarters of a million dollars on touchless water systems.
Mrs. Grineo, do you have any, excuse me, sorry, Dr. Gonzalez?
Don't worry, President Sullivan. President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, I can invite Ms. Kim Grineo, again, our chief financial officer, to speak to that. And responsible agent for this one is Dr. Namu, who's the interim president at Phoenix College, who may be available and called upon if necessary as well. Kim?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, President Sullivan and Mrs. McGrath. I am going to punt this to Dr. Namu, so be ready, Klein. I just wanted to share first that I understand the level of the expense, but I want, did want to clarify that this is using the federal relief HERF fund, which is all all about campus safety as well, which I think is part of the the need for this move in this direction. So Dr. Namu.
Thank you, Kim. You actually stole my talking point with that one. So Board Member McGrath, President Sullivan and members of the board. Yes, that is indeed the case. I think this is our effort to use our HERF funds in a way that will create a safe environment for our students today and far into the future. So if there's anything else we can provide, I'd be happy to do so. Please let us know.
Mrs. McGrath, do you have any other question or comment on this? And we will have it removed for action on the board agenda for next week.
No, I do not. Thank you for asking.
Okay, then moving on to item 11, approval of contract issuance to the College Tour LLC for English language episodes streaming on Amazon Prime totaling $185,000. Any comments or questions on this?
I would like to have this removed also.
Okay, and what information would you like on this item to be prepared for the vote?
I don't see any justification for spending this money at this time.
Is there anyone who can provide any information on this a little more in depth than what's in our packet, Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, I would invite Mr. Matt Hassan, our chief communications officer, to speak to this item.
Thank you, Chancellor Gonzalez, President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, thank you for asking the question. The College Tour is a Emmy award winning production company that shoots college events. These two episodes are one hour episodes highlighting our call, all 10 colleges in an hour episode, telling the story of our our students and our campuses through the student voices. These are extremely impactful shows endeavors. We'll own all the content for these programs. This is part of our marketing effort to reach a larger audience, to meet the chancellor's direction for new and bold ideas, especially in the marketing and engagement space when we try to reach out to our students where they're at. And you'll see item number 12 is a Spanish language, language episode. As we were thinking about bold strategies to to reach out to students, we will be the first community colleges to participate in this program. We will also be the first institution of higher ed to produce an hour long program fully in Spanish to meet the 43% of our population that speaks Spanish here in the valley. And we feel that this this content is going to really help us tell our story. The fact that we'll own this content, every bit of it will allow us to repurpose it in different forms. We already have agreements with Tempe Union, Phoenix Union and Mesa Public Schools for them to reshare and repurpose our content as it draws near and when we air these episodes. So this is going to be pretty powerful, pretty impactful. And the reason we brought it to you today is a bit of a mea culpa. The two contracts with the same vendor go over the $250,000 threshold, but each episode is $185,000. So that's why we're bringing it here.
Any other comments or questions on this? And per Mrs. McGrath's request, item 11 will be removed to the action agenda, and I assume Mrs. McGrath, item 12 as well.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
Matt Hassan addressed part of my question. But I'm interested in the intended audience. So it sounds like from what he just shared that the intended audience is local. Are we also hoping that this will reach potential international students or out of state students?
Dr. Thor, President Sullivan, yes, that is absolutely the case. We hope to reach as large an audience as possible. And we'll, and again, to your point, we will use the, as we package these different pieces of content up, we'll share them on different platforms and to, as we target the different populations, that is absolutely the case.
Thank you.
And and Dr. Thor, they do stream globally. So the platforms that, some of the platforms that these, this show will air on will be Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Prime, Android, Google TV, Xbox and PlayStation 4. As you can imagine, Xbox and PlayStation 4, you can stream from their, those platforms. And our younger generation is on those platforms quite often. So it is a, it is a global platform as well as Amazon.
Right, and it, it would seem to me that this raises the visibility and the reputation of the district and our colleges and perhaps would be helpful in recruiting future faculty, staff and administrators.
That's, that's correct, Dr. Thor. Thank you for that also. This, you know, this, this helps build our brand awareness and our reputation. As students go to the landing page for the College Tour, they're going to see on either side of us, our icon, on either side of us, they'll see institutions like the University of Texas, ASU, Grand Canyon. And, you know, as we look to talk about ourselves in that space, especially with the four year degree opportunity coming down the pike, this really puts us on that stage. And, you know, our students are just as good, if not better than those students. So for us to begin to talk about ourselves in that space does raise our reputation and does bring in some of those other entities, as you mentioned, the faculty, administrators, students, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, board members on the, on these two items, 11 and 12?
Yes, this is Mrs. Nguyen. Matt, could you tell us about the cost per impression? And in your presentation that you just gave, you said it's a new venue or a new program or something. So is there no, do they, do we not have like an established viewership or or users or however they're measuring their hits? So what, what, what is our cost for getting our cost per person, I guess? I know I'm not using the right lingo, but you know what I'm asking, right?
I do, Board Member Nguyen, I understand where you're going with that. And we don't yet know how to measure that, but as you take the the episode, and as I mentioned before, you'll be able to break it out into different bite sized pieces. And when I say that, if you, if if you are on TikTok, you'll see 15 second, 30 second, 45 second, and so on, different segments. And we'll be able to realize those, that ROI, the return on the investment down the road. But the impressions will be in the millions. So we'll be able to provide that data. But we'll be able to do that with 42nd bite size analytics. And again, this is, you're talking about across all of the social platforms, TikTok, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook and and so forth, LinkedIn. We'll be able to highlight these, these episodes. We'll be able to highlight the different students. For example, an Australia mountain student speaking in Spanish about his or her experience. We'll be able to leverage that both here at the district, at the campus, and then wherever that high school, wherever that student went to high school, we'll also be able to leverage that.
I appreciate that. And it's, I just want to say it's $370,000. And does this include production and does it give us 100% full rights to the content that you are creating?
Board Member Nguyen, that's correct. We have a 100% rights to all of the content and the cost does include everything from pre-production, post-production, the entire, the entire process.
Okay, and if we're looking, since we don't know how many impressions we're going to get, if we're looking at producing something or doing this for $370,000, I know airtime is expensive, but seeing something on TikTok for 15 seconds, how do we know that there, you can have a lot of impressions, but obviously the thing we want them to do is not just look at it, but we want them to take action. So are these going to be designed so people can take action? I think I would want more information before I would vote favorably on this. I don't think this gives us enough information and it's a very hefty price tag. So I, Matt, those are my concerns and I'm happy to put them in an email and so we don't take up any more time right now. I want to reach out to students, but I'm not sure this is the most effective way.
Understood, Board Member Nguyen. We'll, we'll be ready to answer your questions, but I think you'll be pleased with how we capture the data. And yes, there will be call to action. TikTok videos, the, when you click on those, there's a call to action. You can click, you're taken to a landing page where we capture the analytics.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I appreciate, I appreciate your responses.
I want to remind board members that the contract, et cetera, is in the board packet and has, provides a lot of detail pursuant to your questions. For example, Mrs. Nguyen, on the design of the the contract, et cetera. So you may want to have that read. There's, there's quite a bit of material on each one, the Spanish one and the other. On the other comment on that, Matt, I assume this money is coming out of your budget. And that's as a result of an analysis of where you feel your money would be most impactful. And perhaps when we get to this as a voting item next week, you could have a little, some information about that as well.
President Sullivan will do, and yes, this will be coming out of our budget.
Perfect, okay. So we'll look to then item 11 and 12 being on an action as action items. And board members, if you have further questions or comments on those items, please forward them through to Dr. Gonzalez, who will send them to Mr. Hassan. And then we will have that discussion at next week's meeting. So thank you for that. Board members, any other comments or questions on item 11, 12? Then we'll move to item 13, approval of water services agreement with Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community for Scottsdale Community College. Are there any comments or questions? We move to item 14, approval of curriculum item. We have 47 course deletions, 21 modifications and 59 new items. In occupational programs, there are nine new, 37 modifications, 19 deletions. And in academic programs, one modification. Are there any comments or questions on this presentation for approval? Okay, you're sidelined, move in.
I just had, this is Dr. Norene. Again, you know, as we're talking about how we're going to publicize the the district and the programs. Again, you know, these are programs that are, you know, especially like the construction program and the the computer program that starts with the letter K. Sound like some, you know, I looked into those. Again, how do we get this out to the to the public? How do we get, you know, do we have a plan to to promote these things once we pass them? Because these are some pretty outstanding programs that are, that are in high demand. Again, so how do we, you know, get this out there so that we can generate some more interest in these, in these type of programs and generate more enrollment?
To that end, Dr. Norene, would you like to have this pulled also for action? So you, we can have some comment on that?
No, I would, I would, no, I wouldn't want it pulled. I just, I just want to make sure that that we we think about, you know, as we do these new programs and the change in programs, these are excellent programs that are, you know, that a lot of research has gone into to to decide these are programs that are needed and and are going to benefit our students. But we, they do us no good if we don't get the word out to the students so we can get them enrolled. So, you know, as we, as we develop these new programs, I just hope that that we have ways to to promote them to the public, to the, to the counselors, to the students, to, you know, to the industry so that we can get, you know, so we can capitalize on this work that that so many people have already done to to get these where where they are.
Thank you. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment to Dr. Norene's comment?
And thank you, President Sullivan. Dr. Norene, we've noted your your request. And I don't have any specifics on on these programs. But I can tell you from previous experience that, you know, we we take a systems wide approach and then we take college approach and sometimes even program specific approach and and how we market these new programs, anywhere from, you know, the paper brochures to, you know, the social media to, you know, advertisements on our websites and such. And so it's a, it's a big, it's a wide effort. It's a wide net that's cast. But, you know, for any of these programs, I'm going to ask my my college presidents that don't necessarily need to answer in this moment. But we would be happy to come back and perhaps give you a few examples to demonstrate what we're doing to market. To demonstrate what we're doing to market some of these changes or these brand new programs.
Okay, perhaps, Dr. Gonzalez, we could have that under one of your updates?
Yes, we'll, we'll do. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on item 14? Being then, then we'll move to item 15, approval of adoption of fiscal year 22, 23 tuition and fee rates. Any comments or questions on this item?
Yes, I'd like to know why we would be changing the tuition. I'd like to pull this item.
Okay, and we can, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment either from you or, or Ms.? Grineau on this item?
Yes, President Sullivan, may, may I please ask Mrs. McGrath to repeat your question? I had a hard time hearing.
Yeah. Mrs. McGrath?
I'd like to know why we're considering changing the tuition.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath, President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath. Kim, is there any initial response to that? Or do we need more specifics to that question? Because. On the whole, I don't see that we're increasing tuition from our current $85 per current hour rate. Is that correct?
Dr. Gonzalez, yes, that is correct. We are making no changes. This is just to reaffirm the current schedule that we already have.
Mrs. McGrath, with that information, do you still want it pulled on the agenda?
So, it will stay at $85 a semester hour until further notice?
Mrs. McGrath, absolutely.
Thank you. I don't need to pull it then.
Yeah. So, with that then, that was item 15. Item 16, approval of support. Yes, yes, go ahead.
I do have some questions. Ms. Grineau just indicated that we're not deviating from the current schedule. But I'd like clarification. Are we eliminating the 12-hour cap that we instituted a year or two ago?
Mrs. Sullivan and Dr. Thor. I, I am gonna have to double check that, but I believe we are, but we did not have it in place for fiscal year 22 either. That was only in place for fiscal 21.
Okay, thank you. I obviously missed it last year. And are we also eliminating the? Non-res, let me try this again. So, at the same time we put the 12-hour cap, we also allowed for non-residents to take up to 16 credits. At the resident rate? Has that been eliminated as well?
President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, yes. Again, that was only in place for fiscal 21 and we have not had it in place during fiscal 22.
Okay, thank you. And I believe at an earlier time, I requested. Information on the impact of the senior rate. And I, you know, I don't know whether it's possible for you to tell us. Whether that lower rate has increased the enrollment of seniors. As well as how much revenue is lost because of the senior rate.
President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, so that one, I do not have an answer to that question. But that is certainly a data point that we will take a look at and see what we can pull and get back to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Ms. Grineau, given that the question was asked at this moment, you can. Make your response to the entire board. And if there are further questions at the time of the meeting, we can pull this. If not, that may satisfy people's interests. So. If you can do that prior to our meeting, that would be great.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. So, I, so any more comments or questions on item 15? Being then, moving to item 16, approval of support for establishing a foreign trade subzone for Sunlit Arizona LLC. Do we have any comments or questions on that?
I would like to pull this item. I need a lot more information as to why we would be favoring certain companies over others.
Is there a comment on that from staff, Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, I'm gonna ask Kim to speak to this one.
Can I go back to the tuition question? Sorry, just kidding. President Sullivan and Mrs. McGrath. So, this is one that I will have to do a little bit more research and get back to you on. The, the one thing I can tell you. Is this action item is changing the boundaries of the foreign trade subzone. And in January of 2021. The board did agree to support the establishment of the foreign trade zone. For TSMC, Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturing Company. And really, this is all run through the city of Phoenix. The, the foreign trade zones are essentially. Under the supervision of the city of Phoenix. They're the grantee of that foreign trade zone. And because it changes the tax classification, what ends up happening is they go to all of the taxing jurisdictions. To determine if we concur, if we support or don't not support that classification. But at the end of the day, it doesn't have any tax implications on our tax levy for Maricopa Community Colleges. So, in, in past instances, there, there's not too many of these that have come forward. But in past instances, we have supported them because typically they bring additional workforce opportunities. And hopefully, training opportunities for Maricopa Community Colleges when those businesses are established within our county. So, if you need more information than that, I'll have to do a bit more research.
This is one of the reasons I would like to return to a two-week interval between the agenda setting and the regular board meeting. We used to have that and we had enough time to delve into these questions and get the answers. With this one-week gap, we no longer have that privilege. And I would really encourage that we go back to a two-week gap in between the two. The prior administration and staff were all very capable of getting things put together with a two-week schedule. So. I don't like the idea of harming something, but this makes no sense to me. To favor one company over another with these foreign trade zones. And I'd really like to have more time to study it.
And by pulling it on the agenda, does, does that give you the information you need? And that would be one. Two, Ms. Grineau, how much time do you need to, to pull some information on this?
We will absolutely see what we can pull together in the next few days.
Well, I mean, be realistic about what you can do. We can always postpone, can we postpone this to the next agenda? Next month, if in fact, it's an unwieldy amount of time for you to. I, I want to appreciate your time is, is what I'm saying. So, if you can't feel you can do that, we'll keep it on the agenda. If you don't feel you can. We can postpone this item unless there's a time restraint on this item.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I imagine that the city of Phoenix would like to get this answer sooner rather than later. So, I think what I would like to do, if it's acceptable, is to see what information we can get and pull together by the end of the week. And most certainly, if it is not sufficient and there is not time for the board members to review it, then we would ask to have this moved to the next month's agenda. Is that acceptable?
Certainly, to me it is. Mrs. McGrath, will that meet your need in the short term here?
In the short term, I'd still like to go back to a two-week interval for, in the future. Thank you.
Sure. So, Ms. Grineau, Dr. Gonzalez, I think we'll go proceed as, as you've indicated. On that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan.
So, with that, those would be the items for the consent agenda. What I have noted, however, is item 10, 11, 12. Will be pulled to action items. And item 16 is a bit up in the air until we know a little more from Ms. Grineau. And we'll either move forward with it on the consent agenda or we will pull it to the action or we will postpone it. So, three opportu- three options there. So, moving on then, onto next week's agenda, there will be employment separations for December 25, 21 through January 21, 2022. Are there any comments or questions on, on that report? Being done then, the, we, next would be to review the monitoring reports, the budget analysis report fund one. General unrestricted fund for the seven months ending 1/31/2022. Do you have any comments or questions, board members? Being done, the next item on, the next week's agenda would be the governing board report. And then we would move into commenting on the establishment of our next meeting dates. Want to repeat, board members, that on March 11, 2022, which is a Friday. We will in fact have another board retreat. Right now, the primary topic, there will be more discussion on policy and possibly accreditation. For us to understand and appreciate the impact and concepts around all of that. And, and of any other item that may be immediately pressing for us as board members to discuss in a retreat setting. With that then, we would move on March 15 to agenda review at 4:30 and March 22, our regular board meeting at 6:30. However, I've been working with Doc, and I've been working with Dr. Gonzalez to anticipate work sessions in addition to. What we have been doing now so we can plan going forward and inform you of when we may in fact have particular work sessions. Of course, that doesn't preclude any. Last-minute item or discussion that is important for us to have as a board. And I will be sending out that list. To you, or Elza will be sending out that list to you as soon as we finalize that and integrate it. I believe. The interests on the financial presentations, et cetera. There's anything of interest or urgency that you would like us to have a, a work session on, please let me know. And we will ensure that that gets placed on a calendar for us to move forward and anticipate what's ahead. It's a very busy year and exciting. We'll get more information in. Dr. Gonzalez's update on the status of our strategic planning. As we just were talking about, certainly, a marketing presentation, legislative agendas. And all sorts of other items. So. With that, yes, go ahead.
Um, it says establishment of next meeting dates and it says March 15 virtual, but March 22 does not say virtual. Are we to assume that we're gonna be meeting back in person?
No, I'm going to do that on a monthly basis, though all of our agenda reviews are virtual.
Right, but what about the regular board meeting?
Right now, I can't tell you what March 22 will be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, with that, everyone, anything else for the good of the order, board members? Being done, I'm going to adjourn our meeting. It is 6:15. And thank you for your attention this evening. May you have a good night and I'll see you next week.